Welcome to the July 26, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Jim Johnson of the Fellowship Bible Church. Would you please stand?
Please join me in prayer. Father God, I want to begin by thanking you personally for the privilege of having lived and worked in Longview for the last 26 years and having raised my kids here, Lord. Father, I thank you as well for each leader here, for our city council, our mayor, the city manager, and so many others. I know, Father, that the cost of leadership is far greater than its reward, so I pray that you would bless them for their sacrificial work on behalf of this city. I pray specifically, Lord, that you give them peace and stability in their personal finances, their relationships, and even their health, so that they'll have the time and attention they need to give to the business of this city. And tonight, as they deliberate, Lord, give them compassion, so that the weak and needy in our community will be cared for and protected; clarity, so that their decisions would be wise ones; give them favor in the eyes of the federal and state agencies with whom they must work; give them the ability to be tactful when necessary, and yet unpopular decisions must be made; help them, Father, to set aside any personal self-seeking agendas and to recognize and support the agenda you have for this city. We thank you for blessing us with prosperity in this community. Help them to be generous tonight as they consider how to disperse those funds, Lord. Give them insight to see what this city is and vision to see what it could be; give them enough success to keep them encouraged and enough difficulty to make them aware of their need of you and of each other. God bless the city of Longview, Texas, and its people, and as we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
We join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. Thanks for being here. I'm not sure why we got old Glory back here in the corner staff, but maybe we could put her out there proudly. Thank you. Okay. We have a citizen comment tonight, and we have Mr. Donald Wells.
I'd like to say a greeting to the council. I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Smith, on being city councilman for District Two. First, I want to be talking about two things: MLK Street and Black Leadership. I believe that MLK Street, that section between Young Street and Cotton Street, could have been better serviced, could have been done to it. I have a pitch up that I took in 2011. That's the reason that it looked like that. There's something causing that. The city engineers should know that street been repaid many times, and I think it should... This is a pitch up Reed Road in North Longview. It was repaid last year. It was a two-lane street. They made a four-lane street. They replaced the asphalt with concrete. I think that could have been done over there. I don't know what it costs. I want to talk about Black Leadership. There's something going on in this country where there are Black leaders. Dr. Marluca Keen said that he didn't want his people depending on the government. Our government today seem to want Black people, white people, Hispanic people on welfare. I never hear the President Obama talk about someone that work hard, that want to be the best they can, give everything they got, and go out and get an education, even start a job. He always try to make things worse. This is the greatest country in the world. Anybody that want to be some can be some. The NAACP, when I was a child, they stood for some. I admired them. The NAACP today go along with the government. When it come to charter schools, they're against it. Anything to better the Black kids, poor kids in school, they're against it. Anything to change the welfare system, they're against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Elise Bowers?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Elise Bowers, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and ask as a citizen and behalf of the citizens of Longview who feel deeply about this issue. There are many citizens who would love to see the city of Longview have a decent humane animal shelter. We would like to see the city take on this endeavor, so it will be run appropriately and by regulations. We would like to ask that this subject be put on the agenda for discussion at the next city council's next meeting, August 9. We also ask that a building of the shelter be brought to a special election as early as possible, possibly August or September, and no later than November, so that the people of Longview can cast their vote. We, the citizens of Longview, request that you address the issues at hand and that we be actively involved in working with you as to guide you, Mr. Mayor and council members, as to what is best for our city and these animals. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Let me...I'll address...you can sit down. I'll address a couple of your points. And I've not met you before, and we've had numerous meetings with the various groups that are very passionate about, you know, the shelter, about the animals. And this council's position has pretty much remained the same for the last two, three years. We have lots of needs in this city, and what we looked at in as much as building a new shelter was a private and public partnership, which means that we join with the various groups that are trying to raise money for the shelter, and they put up half, we put up, the city puts up half. The city's half would be put up through bringing it to a referendum to the voters, because in all likelihood it would require a tax increase on the property tax, on the property values, properties of homeowners. Okay? The problem we have and have had is the fact that we have yet to hear from one of the groups any mention of a commitment of how much they're going to raise to go toward that project. Okay? And until that happens, there's not a whole lot we can do. We've come to the table numerous times. We will come back to the table. When there's a commitment made, you know, by the private side of this issue to raise X amount of dollars, if it's a $2 million facility, they're going to raise a million dollars. Then it makes sense, and I've spoken to Mr. Sims about this, and it makes sense to go to the voters and say, "Hey, are you interested? And here's what it's going to cost, and here's what impact it might have on your property taxes." So that's where we are with this. And until...you can sit back down, ma'am. Until the various...there's...I'm guessing there's probably four or five different groups, whether it's on adoption, whether it's on, you know, I mean, there's just different people, different groups working together, trying to, you know, trying to make life better for these animals. But the reality is, before a new, you know, shelter would be built, they've got to all come together and figure out, you know, what they're going to do to help raise money, you know, to help go toward paying for this. And it's not just the cost of building the facility, it's the cost of operating, you know, that facility as well. I'll mention one other thing. I had one of the groups contact me about potentially talking with Tyler, the mayor Tyler, and maybe coming up with a East Texas regional facility, because Tyler's going through the same thing. They have gone through the same thing. All of their animals are now going to, I think it's called Klein, in Jacksonville. Okay? And guess what typically happens, you know, when animals get there? Not adoptables, okay? So we...and I have spoken to her, and I will continue to speak about maybe a potential regional cooperative effort, because it's to ask the voters, you know, I'm passionate, I've got lots of dogs, got lots of animals, but not every taxpayer is. And to ask the taxpayer, you know, to foot yet another bill, okay? It's important that the people that are passionate work together and come up with how we raise the money, the city puts up money to go do this. And one option could be a regional, you know, because a lot of cities are going through the same, this very same thing, what to do. Okay? And we're going to continue to pursue options. But again, until we get to the point where we know what we can depend on from the private side in this partnership, there's not a whole lot we can do. Okay?
I'd like to see you put it on the agenda, sir, so we may...
Ma'am, what am I going to put on the agenda? What are we going to put on the agenda? We're going...we've already got designs, okay? We've gone through the engineering. We've got all of that done. The only thing that's missing, which is always what happens, how you going to pay for it? And until we get to the point of how we're going to pay for it between this public and private partnership, what is council going to put on the agenda? I mean, it's out there. Give us some help with that, and we can put it on the agenda, because I would love to just take the whole package, you know, to the voters and let the voters decide, up or down. Okay? I'm concerned that without this public-private partnership, the voters are going to say, "No, we've got enough." You know, tax increase in this day and time is not a popular subject, irregardless how some of us feel about, you know, our particular passion, our issues. So we'll continue, you know, to work on this. But that's where the, you know, the stumbling block is, in my humble opinion. I've dealt with this for a long time, and I'm not sure, you know, until we get that commitment, where we go with this. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation item. Presentation of a life-saving award to Sergeant Chip Kepke.
Kepke.
Kepke, all right. I knew it wasn't a French name.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Willard. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Sergeant Chip Kepke. I'll give you a little information about Sergeant Kepke. On the night of April the 21st, 2012, Sergeant Kepke observed a vehicle run off the road in the 2900 block of H.G. Mosley. The vehicle struck two trees and sustained major damage, which kept the driver's door from being open. Sergeant Kepke entered the vehicle passenger door to check the welfare of the driver, and he found a 23-year-old lady unconscious with serious injuries and having problems breathing. The vehicle then began filling up with smoke from an electrical fire. Sergeant Kepke found that he had to hold up the lady's head upright to keep her airway open. As the vehicle became completely engulfed in smoke, Sergeant Kepke remained in the vehicle at the risk of his own safety until fire and EMS arrived. After the fire department extricated the lady, she and Sergeant Kepke both were transported to an area hospital. It was the opinion of the fire personnel and other police officers at the scene that Sergeant Kepke provided life-saving measures, allowing this lady to survive the accident. Sergeant, I have a plaque for you that says, "Life-saving award, Donald Chip Kepke, in recognition of outstanding performance of duties and exceptional actions taken without regard to personal safety, said actions resulting in the saving of a human life."
I just...I also want to recognize other officers that were there and kind of protected myself and the victim as well, and it was one of them's here tonight, Officer Nikki Williams. Step up a little bit. Officer Jeff Timmons and also Officer Ryan Gibson, and they were instrumental in this as well, manning fire extinguishers and busting out windows to let some of the smoke out so we could both breathe. So I want to thank them as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of our offices. Y'all make us very proud. Council, we have a consent agenda. Is there any item on consent agenda that council would like to pull for separate consideration? They're not being so...may I have a motion?
Sound move.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Budget items. Presentation of a proposed fiscal year 2012 and '13 budget for the city of Longview. David Willard, city manager.
Appreciate the opportunity to once again present our budget, proposed budget, to you all, and this will begin a long process until we finally approve or ask you to approve the final budget. It's my pleasure tonight to present for your consideration a proposed budget for the city of Longview for 2012, 2013. The document you have before you is the culmination of a process that began in May and will end when the council adopts the final version of this budget at the end of August. As we go forward from tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for discussion and public input. The city staff will be more than glad to answer any questions you might have, as well as providing you with any other information necessary to help you make informed decisions. As you know, over the course of the last two years, our community has faced some difficult times, and due to the national recession, there are businesses that have struggled to earn a profit. Probably the most impactful aspect to our local economy has been the fall in natural gas prices. As a result, many of the oil and gas service companies have shifted their focus to the Eagle Ford oil play in South Texas. Even so, the Longview economy is well diversified and has fared much better than many other cities in Texas, as well as the nation as a whole. Once again, our city staff has done an excellent job of managing their budgets, and we expect to end the 2012 budget year this September with expenditures under our revenues, resulting in another budget surplus for this current year. Even with Longview's economic stability, there is still the need to budget as conservatively as possible, and although we have seen increases in the cost of providing services, we understand that as any business or family budget, we at the city must also balance our expenses with the available income, and that is the budget that we are presenting to you tonight. In preparing this budget proposal for you, we have kept the following goals in mind. Number one, budget conservatively. Number two, to remain fiscally responsible. Also, to reduce costs through the budget when possible, and to continue to provide the quality of services to the citizens of this community, especially in the core areas of public safety and public works, all the while not raising taxes. I want to thank our directors, department heads, and staff for their work to get us to this point in the budget preparation. I'd also like to recognize my budget team, Assistant City Manager Chuck Ewing, Assistant to the City Manager Mary Ann Miller, and Finance Director Angela Cohen. And special kudos to Angela Cohen tonight. She has...we lost our budget director two weeks before all this began in May, and so Angela, being the finance director, stepped up and assumed those duties along with everything else that she's had to do, and she's put in a lot of hours, extra hours, filling in this year. So we want to thank Angela especially for what she's done. All right, we have our slide presentation to you, and of course, this doesn't cover every aspect of the budget. This is just the initial proposal and presentation, and we're going to hit highlights, and we'll have plenty of time for your questions and further discussion as we go forward. The first slide shows you some budget assumptions that we budgeted, and of course, the first thing we look at are what our revenue's going to be, or what are we going to project our revenues to be. And one of the key components of that are our property values. Thirty-three percent or so, as you'll see in a minute, of our general fund revenue comes from property taxes, and so the property appraisals are very important. And this budget is based upon our property values up an overall 2.5% over last year's taxable value. And remember that part of the city of Longview is in Harrison County, and the majority, however, in Gregg County, so with both of those appraisals together, our overall average is up 2.5%. We're budgeting lower sales tax collections. We have put in our budget a decrease of 1% down as compared to fiscal year 11 and 12, year-end estimate. Now, the reason we want to do that is to budget conservatively. We've gotten some positive numbers here on the appraised values, but we do understand that sales tax collections are flat. We've not seen really much increase at all in the last two years. And so we decided to be extra conservative and to budget that down to give us plenty of room on our revenues. Also, we're not going to recommend any property rate increase. The overall property tax rate will remain the same. We're also not proposing to increase our sanitation rates this year. And also, on our water and sewer rates, we are going to propose a rate increase in that area, and we'll visit more about that in just a moment. Other budget assumptions you'll find in this budget, we're going to increase or propose to increase the city's contribution to the firefighter pension fund of $110,000 extra this year in the budget. And we might want to spend just a second here, and we'll see some more things later, but you'll remember the city of Longview, most employees are under the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS, for that, for their retirement portion of their benefits. The employee puts in a percentage of their paycheck, every paycheck into the system, and then when they retire, the city matches that portion or has a matching portion that also goes in there. The firefighters, however, and some civilian staff in the fire department are not members of TMRS. They're a member of the local Longview Firefighters Pension Fund. And these pension funds were authorized by the state legislature, I think in 1947, many years ago, and they have their own board, their own fund, and on board. Mr. Manley is the council liaison to the firefighter pension board for this next year, and then Angela Cohen, our finance director, is also on that board, and they have their own fund and their own separate rules and regulations. And we'll see in just a few minutes, we've had some issues. They received their current amateur...or not amateurization, but actuary study, and we felt like this year, due to the long-term pension liabilities, that we needed, the city needed on our contribution side to add $110,000. I will tell you that the pension board, I've spoken with Colby Beckham, he's a captain with the Longview Fire Department, the president of that board. We've had discussions, and he's aware that we're proposing this additional contribution. But long-term, like so many other pensions, those current benefits are not sustainable in the many years out. And so we began preliminary discussions with Mr. Beckham and his group about looking at ways to curtail future benefits, to cut off some of these long-term liabilities and get it where it's more manageable, and it'll be a better fund for them down the road. I don't want to make it look like we're in the way California is, it's not that way at all. We've had a lot of publicity about that. Our fund is not in that kind of shape, or the firefighter pension fund is not. But we do need to address some long-term things where it doesn't get to that point out in the future. This is the first portion of that, and then we'll be coming back over the next several months with a plan from the firefighter group, hopefully, to get some of these things addressed for the long term. Another highlight of this budget, we are asking you to add, let us add, an internal auditor position. You'll remember our outside auditors for the last two years have recommended that we have this position, and this year, we'd like to put that in. We had an internal auditor position, and then three years ago, we cut that position because of the budget cuts during the recession to do that, but we'd like to put that back in. And the annual salary benefits and then the startup costs for office supplies, those type of things, we're estimating to be $90,000. I believe that this will pay for itself many times over. This internal auditor will audit hotel motel tax monies. This person will go around to all the different city offices, finance department, municipal court, fire department, everywhere to do audit processes and anybody that's handling money, just to make sure that we're doing it in the appropriate way, and that we can address those things instead of the outside auditors finding those things and having to address them, that we can take care of some of those before it gets to that point. We're also increasing our street maintenance in this budget by $600,000, which is a big jump. Currently, or last year, it was $1,241,000, and that'll increase it to a little over $1,808,000 to go into our regular street maintenance budget. And Mr. Bonds can tell you that this will greatly help them to address even more streets. We know Mayor and Council's been interested in our streets. We've got the street bond issue that we're currently working on, and this will just be another shot in the arm to further address more maintenance issues all over the city of Longview. We're also wanting to upgrade our traffic signals. This, to buy new software and controllers for out in the field, we're estimating we'll need $155,000. The mayor can speak to this as well, was on a tour at...
Wait a minute, you're talking about when I run them?
No, you...I'm talking about that...
I'm just kidding, chief, I don't do that.
Talking about that DOS computer software.
I saw it, yeah.
Such an antiquated deal, and you'll notice that every time we have a little storm, we lose traffic signals and things of that nature, and a lot of that's due to the antiquated software we have, and it's...
Excuse me, but tell them that the system looks like the first Apple, is still using floppy disk, and it's DOS. Okay? It's super antiquated.
So anyway, this will get us up to speed where we need to be, and hopefully, it'll...the citizens will like that aspect, too.
Oh, yeah.
This will synchronize, it'll get us up to speed, Mr. Bonds, is that correct? The traffic control guys over there are just doing handsprings right now.
I just had that question from somebody today.
They've been patching that thing.
They've been patching it...
What's it, 20 years old, Keith? That computer?
It's like 94 model.
1994 model, so...
Can't get parts for it anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So this will greatly help us. And then also, finally, another highlight, we're asking the council to consider granting the employees a 3% raise beginning in April of 2013, a mid-year raise for the employees. All right, looking at some of the financial information real quickly, this is a graph of the property values, the historical look since 2007, and you can see that we've had good growth in Longview. Even through the real downturn in the recession, say from 2009 through 2011, we held our own. The property values didn't waver much at all, and then last year, in 2012, we got a small increase, and then this year... And then this year, 2013, reflects the two and a half percent increase in property values that you see there, up to $5,516,496,084. So that just shows the stability that we have financially here in Longview, which we're blessed. The next slide reflects off of those tax bases, reflects the revenue that is generated from the property tax that is levied against those values. And it reflects basically the same thing and we expect in 2013 to receive $19,937,313 from property taxes. Then sales tax, the next component, and you'll see historically what sales tax has done and of course, in 2010 during the recession, we collected $18,132,568. And so, we all remember how tough that year was. We bounced back in 2011 and you can see 2011 and what we expect to finish the year up in 2012 are just about the same, really not much difference at all. And you'll see there for 2013, we've budgeted less money than what we are going to collect this year. I really believe we're going to collect next year about the same as we have been doing. I don't expect a lot of growth, but we just felt like due to still uncertain economic times that we'd be better served to budget sales tax a little bit more conservatively. And so, that reflects the $19,944,525. Here's our chart on the sales tax, I mean, I'm sorry, the tax rates for abhorrent tax and of course, you'll see historically, this mayor and council and other mayors and councils have, this has been a real important aspect to the budgets to maintain the tax rate. And basically, the only difference in the last 12 years when it comes to tax rates are voter-approved debt issues, bonded indebtedness. And you'll see last year, that increases, we're up to .5009 and that reflects the voter-approved $52 million bond election that the voters approved. And so, this year is no different, we're not raising the tax rate at all. It's the same proposed at 50.09. These are pie charts, just another graphic to show you the general fund revenue and the different sources that make up our revenue in the general fund. And you can see, we're expecting total revenue of $60,369,935. You'll see the red and the blue are of course, the sales tax and property tax revenues. And it's interesting, about what, 66% of the revenue for the general fund comes by virtue of property and sales taxes. These are the expenditures and again, we, our expenditures will equal our revenues, And you know, what is that, 60-something percent nearly of our expenditures go toward public safety, fire and police. That's obviously a core part of what municipalities do and our budget reflects our commitment to public safety. I want to talk to you about the other aspect of the retirement system. We talked a little bit about fire pension and I want to show you about TMRS. This is their municipal retirement system to see what has happened here and to give us hope about these other pension funds as well. In 2011, TMRS restructured their plan. You'll remember during that time that, you know, our liabilities were really going through the roof on that statewide system and our contribution rates were increasing. And TMRS went back to the state legislature and made some changes that have been very productive, not only for the employees, but for the taxpayers in the state and this city as well. Of course, in 2012, when those, after those were enacted, our budgeted rate for the city's contribution dropped from 14.57% into the employees, down to 11.24. So we saw a dramatic drop in what our contribution rate was. And then in 2013, our projected rate for this coming year is 10.95%, a further reduction and a savings of $163,000 to the city budget. So, and then the funded liability ratio at the bottom has increased from a low of 70.8% up to 91%. So the TMRS is 91% funded as a pension fund and I think most actuaries will tell you that anything over 70 to 80% is real healthy. So TMRS has really turned things around down there and I think that's a good story to tell. Finally, on the general fund summary, we're going to end this budget year in September, we believe, with a fund balance of $12,941,301, which will be the beginning balance of the new year. Revenues and expenses of $60,369,935 with an ending fund balance of $12,941,301, which is 21.44%. Now, because we are fiscally conservative and we want to maintain our financial responsibility, we're reserving out of that fund balance, $2,811,066 for OPEB, that's other post-employment benefits. Those are the long-term healthcare liabilities that are out there. And you'll remember the council several years ago did a lot to cap that future liability because of retiree health insurance changes that you all made and that's really helped. And then we're reserving over for the firefighter pension liability, $1,342,386 in reserve. Now, let me say the council, if you ever wanted to, that money is not, that's set over just for good financial practice. So if it ever needed, needed it for something, it obviously could be used, but we like to reserve that over and for our future liabilities. So that would give us an ending fund balance at the end of next year of $8,787,849, which is nearly 15%. And then down at the bottom, council's policy of the 10% fund balance requirement, the 14.56% would give you nearly two and three-quarter million dollars above the 10%. That's completely unrestricted reserve for the city of Longview. Are there any questions on the general fund? Yes, sir.
On those two items there, reserve for OP being firefighter, is that for unfunded liability?
Yes, sir.
Is that what that is?
Those are for future liabilities that the actuary says that need to be, we'd either need to book them as long-term liabilities on our books or we can reserve out this amount of money and not book the liability. So this goes against the future liability. But those things change because of actuaries and what the market does over time and things like that.
But we've done that before in other budget cycles.
Yeah. We just want to present that to you that, you know, if you look and say, hey, we've got, you know, $12.9 million of fund balance there, we really want to reserve, that's true, we do have that, but we want to be financially responsible and reserve out for those long-term liabilities. So let's do that and then show what the unrestricted fund balance that you have, the $2,750, that is what we would consider a true unrestricted reserve.
How'd you come up with those numbers?
There are the actuaries, the firefighter pension fund has an actuarial study done every two years, I believe it is. And TMR, or OPEB, that's an annual actuarial study, is that correct Angela? So those come from the actuarial study. We could put less in there and move more into fund balance, but we just felt like it'd be more responsible to put in there what the actuary says. And like I say, those can change, you know? And once we get some issues resolved in the firefighter pension fund as far as long-term benefits, that'll make a huge difference in that liability out in the future. Yes, ma'am?
As far as, I have a couple of questions. The internal auditor position, what level of position is that? Is that a director-level position or...
No ma'am, that will be in the city manager's office and Mary Ann Miller will be responsible for that position. It is a, help me carry, what would that be? A grade 65, it's right, would be right under an assistant director grade or...
Yeah, it's right around a manager.
It's right around a manager level in our grading system, the way we grade that.
So it's not a position that would fall in the finance department?
Well, most, it needs to be independent of finance.
Right.
I mean, this independent internal auditor will be auditing finance department. And so, you kind of need, need to have it, most cities, it's in the city manager's office because, and then too, just to be real honest, it needs to be in there because if that internal auditor recommends some changes, they need to have the authority, which comes from the city manager's office, to ask that director to make those changes. And so, it traditionally is housed in the city manager's office.
My other question involves the mid-year employee raises at 3%. Isn't that what we did last year?
We did a 3% raise beginning in October of last year.
Is it going to be for all employees? Because I know that we've put forth an effort to some degree with several of our, with one of our programs, to try to help some of our city employees who may be at the poverty level to come out? And that means those lower-level employees. So I guess that's why I'm asking, are we saying for everyone be at the lower level and the director level?
Right. We have, we proposed a 3% across the board for every employee and that includes our hourly employees as well. Who, you know, pass their annual, you know, not inspection, but...
Because you don't automatically get that 3% right.
Pardon me?
You don't automatically get it, it's more...
No, I mean, they have to pass their valuation.
And one last question on that, and this will be my last one. How long ago was it that we actually did the complete restructuring where the management level and executive level positions received, were placed in different categories and received substantial increases?
It was in 2008 and it implemented in 2009.
Okay, so that was in 2009 we did that.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I'd like to take this opportunity, since you brought that up, to say that we have done an updated review or the consultant did an updated review of that study that was instrumented. And we have several areas that we're behind in that. To get fixed some of those things, of course, costs more money, you know? And we didn't feel like at this particular time that, you know, that we wanted to do that, but we do need to look at some areas where we are behind.
Excuse me, Ms. Willard, just one second. Let's be real clear on that number, okay? Because Ms. Willard and I went back and forth with this, okay? It's a very difficult time. There's a lot of people out there hurting, there's a lot of businesses that are hurting that, that there's no raises being proposed. But this number is based on mid-year because we want to make sure on a revenue side that we're within budget, okay? And the other thing, the other factor here is to making sure that the expenditures, you know, are there too. So when we come back mid-year, you know, for the raise, we have to make sure revenues are within budget and expenditures are hopefully below budget, but so there's going to be, you know, things that trigger that, okay? The other thing is, is the pay study that we did was to try to bring us into, into an area where we could recruit and/or retain our quality, we have quality employees and we want to make sure, every time you skip, you get further and further behind. And let me tell you, you know, when it comes to the metroplex in other areas, some of the salaries that are being paid, you know, we want to, we want to retain and we want to recruit the best and the brightest. But what you're saying about the lower-level tiers, you know, 3% doesn't get there. I mean, sometimes in the past, we've looked at, at the particular positions and see where we are in comparison to the pay study, okay? To where it would end up being an average 3% rather than just strictly across the board. And that, what we're doing tonight, we're just laying things out and that's questions council can come back and discuss with the city manager at the next meetings. Yes, sir?
One other thing, when we did, when we did that study and bottom fell out the next year and we froze it.
That's right.
We didn't go to the next step.
There was, there was a mid-year raise discussion that year that didn't happen.
I remember.
Okay, so anyway, okay, Mr. Willard? Oh, Mr. Sims?
What was the reason for losing our budget director? Was it over the pay or other reasons?
I believe she had another employment opportunity. I don't think it was the pay, I don't know 100% her reasoning, but it, I think primarily she had another job that she went to and felt like she needed to do that for she and her family.
That's, that's a very stressful job, I'm sure. Okay, when you look at the detail...
Look at Angela.
Yeah, Angela's in, it sure is.
She don't have any gray hairs.
No. Okay, Mr. Willard, continue on.
All right. Let's move on to water and wastewater. I've got several slides here, I won't belabor or try to get in too much detail, but just to give you the highlights. All of our water rates for the last several years since 2008, we, council allowed us to do a cost of service and rate design study. You'll remember that, those of you that were on council. RW Beck Incorporated, who is a very reputable utility rate design firm, came in and did a complete cost of service study on our water and wastewater utility. The goals of that study were following, determine the cost of the service. Remember, our water and sewer fund is rate pay, rate payers funded the service. So we have to determine exactly what that costs us to provide that water and that service to them. Second, to recover equitable revenue, to make sure we were recovering enough revenue to provide that service and we found out that we weren't for many years. Then also to maintain the financial integrity of that utility. And then another very important aspect of that was to cash fund future projects instead of issuing debt. And that's been our goal. So let me just show you this slide. This is our 2012 year-end estimate. So for the water and wastewater fund at the end of September of this year, we expect our revenue for the year to be $31,733. Our expenses are right under that. And we have reserved over in this CIP reserve fund that we set up two years ago, we reserve $2.2 million into that reserve fund for future projects. And that'll give us an ending fund balance for this year of $6,714, which is 20.21%. And in the water and utility fund, our fund balance policy is 15% rather than the 10% which we have in general funds. So we're well above our floor on the fund balance. Now debt coverage, and this is a very complicated thing, but it's very important because we have bonded indebtedness in the water and utility fund for projects in the past. You have to maintain a certain debt coverage ratio that's required by our bond companies and bondholders. And that is, the minimum coverage is 1.25 is the ratio of coverage for the bonds. And it's calculated, like you see on the slide, you have to calculate your revenue and then subtract your operating and maintenance costs to get a net revenue figure. And then you have to put in your debt service and multiply or divide your debt service into the net revenue that gives you that ratio. And so, we expect to end this year at 1.36. So we've done pretty well, but we are still above, but we're below the 1.5, which is the council policy for the debt coverage. But still above and meeting our minimum requirement. We are proposing an increase in our water rates and this shows the, of course, we have, you'll remember, a minimum bill and each rate payer gets 2,000 gallons of water for you'll remember, a minimum bill, and each rate payer gets 2,000 gallons of water for a price, that's the minimum, then anything above that is charged out at a rate per thousand gallons. So, this shows with the 5/8 inch meter, and most of the, or a good portion of the residents for the city of Longview have 5/8 inch meters, and a good number also have the 1 inch, and most of your newer homes, I think, are all 1 inch meters now, but we still have a good amount of the 5/8s. Currently, that's $9.57 a month for the minimum, and we're proposing, according to the rate study, that that be increased to $10.15 a month for the minimum. And then the 1 inch meter, from $23.93 to $25.38, and then most, 1.5 to 2, 3, and then certainly an 8 inch meter gets into the industrial range, but the majority of our residents, you know, have 5/8 or 1 inch meters. The rates per 1,000 gallons, of course, the monthly consumption from 2,000 to 50,000 gallons, currently, it's $2.30 per 1,000, and we're proposing that that be increased to $2.50 per 1,000, and then, of course, from 50,000 above, the rest of it, still $2.50 per 1,000. On the sewer side, the current minimum for the 2,000 gallons is $11.30, we're asking that to be increased to $12.05, and the volumetric rate from 3.50 to 3.75. Now, everybody obviously wants to know this, this is our sample monthly bill that shows what the effect of these increases would be, and for a 5/8 inch meter, 7,000 gallons, that's an average meter, average usage across Longview for a 5/8 meter currently, their water and sewer monthly bill would be $49.87, would increase to $53.45, which is a $3.58 a month increase to the 5/8 inch meter customers. One eight, the 1 inch meter, the difference in their monthly bill would go up $5.80, and then a 2 inch meter, which is more industrial, commercial-type meters, would go to $26.99 per month increase. Now, with this proposed rate increase, this is what, and of course, when you're looking at revenue projections for water and sewer out of year, the weather and the rainfall and the amount of, or the lack thereof, make a big difference in trying to predict these, and what makes it so difficult. But anyway, just an average year of rainfall with this rate increase would give us $33 million worth of revenue, the expenses, and we would be able to move over another $3.7 million into that reserve fund, so by the end of next year, we should have close to $6 million of cash in that CIP reserve fund, sitting there building up to do a future water and sewer project and pay cash for it and not have to go out to the debt market. That'd leave us a fund balance of $5,562, which is 16.15%. And on the debt coverage portion of that, with the rate increase, you see, and you'll notice, our debt service is $8,904,000, that's less than what it was last year, so we're whittling away at some of this bonded indebtedness, and it's reflected in the lower debt service payment, but anyway, with this revenue and net revenue, the debt coverage ratio would be 1.53, which is above our minimum and above what the council's policy has been. Now, this shows you, of course, what would happen if you choose not to increase the water rate, and of course, that's a choice council would need to make, but it shows the revenue, and the fund balance is still above what the council policy is for the 15%. We move in a lot less into CIP reserve, obviously, because you don't have the extra revenue from the water rate increase. Where it really hits us is on the next slide, and this is the debt coverage part of it. You'll see that without the rate increase, the debt coverage falls to 1.26, and the minimum's 1.25, and the real danger in this is that, I think this represents a difference of about $100,000 in revenue, so for us to cut it that close, we have to get within $100,000 of meeting that revenue goal, and trying to predict the weather for $100,000 is just virtually impossible, so we do...